Today, the items on our agenda are circulation and parking policies, air quality, highway setback policy, and adaptive management. So, who wants to talk first?
I'll go first, Council Francisco. My name's John Ledbetter. I'm managing the Plan Santa Barbara update process. And just a couple of comments on the agenda before we get started. Rob Dayton will take the lead on the circulation and parking, and we'll review the questions and walk you through those. And then I'll cover air quality with -- Barbara Shelton will also be here for that item. And then I'll go over the adaptive management. I did want to note that -- two things. One, the adaptive management, a couple of the attachments did not make it into the packet, and so I'll hand those out to you now. And just for you, they're really reference materials, but they're -- I think they're helpful. And then the second item was that under the last number five summary of subcommittee recommendations, what we thought we would do is I'll summarize broadly the recommendation from today's meeting, but we'd also like to talk a little bit about how you want to handle the council check-in meeting on April 19th.
Sure.
And I have taken the liberty of drafting up some recommendations to date from the first two meetings here, that I'll be happy to hand those out, and you can give those a quick look now, and if you want to have any comments before -- it's an attachment to the council agenda report for the 19th. But I've tried as best to, or we have tried as best, to capture the proceedings and the recommendations of the subcommittee, so you can look those over if you have any comments. And we can also take comments on those, you know, up until tomorrow, I think, and then it goes into the -- into the legistreme, into the whole, you know, package preparation. So, with that, I will turn it over to our principal planner, Rob Dayton, to run -- walk you through the circulation and parking policies.
Okay. Mr. Dayton?
Good afternoon, community members. So, in talking about transportation, we tried to put together some questions that were general enough to move us in a direction, or have you helped the council move in a direction, but not too laborious to go over everything. And you could break it down pretty much into two discussion items. The first two questions are more about traffic and congestion in the future, and then the questions three and four are more about building size and housing type and influencing that with parking decisions. So, we'll just go over the traffic congestion portion first, and then kind of take it in that order. I don't know if you had a chance to review the council meeting where we gave a presentation, but just the most important thing about that presentation to think about when we're talking about transportation policies in the future, the next two decades, is what happened in the last two decades. And just kind of the high-level summary of that presentation is the last two decades, we're talking about about the same incremental growth as the last two decades for the next two decades. And what happened in the last two decades is we spent a portion of $1 billion, somewhere between a quarter to a half of $1 billion, on really amazing increases in roadway infrastructure. We did a crosstown freeway, we added roads, we made them wider, we supersized five interchanges on the freeway. So, we did a significant amount of capacity increases over those last two decades. And they helped. They helped accommodate the incremental growth. As a matter of fact, in some locations, we actually got better. We reduced traffic congestion over -- with accommodating our incremental growth. And so, what is really different about the last two decades and the next two decades is that capacity infrastructure, both from a financial standpoint and a ability to put it in. In other words, the next level, you know, super, supersized interchanges, you know, really isn't capable of doing it without making Santa Barbara roads that feed them bigger, wider, you know. We've talked in the past about Mission making that six lanes, and Correa eight lanes, and Garden Street, you know, going to six lanes. And so, you know, that's the magnitude that we would need if we could find the money to do and to have the same kind of level of impact infrastructure. For instance, the SB CAG region says, "We need six lanes to the south, we need eight lanes between here and Galita." Well, we're going to try to do the six lanes to the south. We're already saying now, "We're not doing the eight lanes." You know, that is not even in the plan, even though we know we need it in terms of the projected increases in traffic. So, this is kind of speaking to the context question, which is our first question, which we're assuming. We're just assuming that you still believe this. And this is an old policy, which is that we are going to -- the existing city policy, we're affirming that to accommodate incremental land use growth without increasing traffic congestion. We're just assuming that was the baseline. That's what we assumed in the Plan Santa Barbara process. So, assuming that, then we kind of come to the question two, and assuming and understanding the difference between the two decades, so how do we do that? How do we grow incrementally and then keep our congestion levels around the 2008, which is our baseline in the environmental document for Plan Santa Barbara? And those -- so, the question number two, "The city will implement the above policy over the next 20 years by which of the following strategies, and you can choose as many as you believe apply? Locating residential development primarily in the city street grid on the north side of the freeway." We found through the model that if you do development in that area, it's going to have less traffic, generate less traffic if it's in that area, as opposed to outside that area. Implement policy, this is B, implement policy and land use strategies that produce a greater amount of workforce housing. We found in the model that the tide against us is that is the employment position that retires, the employee who lives here, they have a house, and they live in Santa Barbara, and then they retire, and then the replacement for that job can afford to live here, and now they're driving in. That increases our traffic congestion. So, one strategy to resist that is to try to increase workforce housing. And then C, reduce the level of newly permitted commercial square feet, currently proposed at 1.35 million square feet. Commercial square feet by far is, has a much greater traffic impact than residential, particularly when you factor in what I just said, is that it requires employment, which may or may not live here. So, you can reduce traffic, the traffic generation overall over the next 20 years by adjusting that number down. And then D, implement traffic mitigation measures as described in Plan Santa Barbara policy language in the adaptive management program. The ones that we were able to measure and affect, if there are other ways that are that we didn't measure, but the ones we measured were parking pricing, transit incentives, cash-out parking, safe routes to school investment, telecommunications strategies. I can explain those if you really want. I'm not going to go in unless you ask. The good news about -- well, and then to refresh your memory, parking pricing was by and large, by far, the thing that had the most impact on reducing traffic congestion. And then the good news is about that, and I think you've kind of already talked about this at the council level, is, hey, you know, we don't want to do the parking pricing strategies unless the downtown's on board. Well, the good news about that is that you don't have to decide parking strategy, parking pricing, you don't have to prepare for it. In other words, the day you need it, it works. It's not like busing, buses where you have to grow ridership on lines over time. In other words, you could say, "Oh, wow, you know, we're just way too congested, and the downtown wants less congestion, so let's implement this." And within months, you'll see an effect on behavior and whether, and how people get to downtown. So, that's the good news on that one. So, just stopping there, those are the questions that refer to traffic congestion.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, let's talk about parking pricing. So, we all agreed that, or at least you and I agreed, that it wasn't going to be parking meters, but let's say it's some sort of form of on-street parking restriction, correct? Is that what we're talking about? Whether it's a kiosk that you go to, you put your money in, whenever you come back, you put it on your windshield or whatever. That's the kind of thing you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I think that we've agreed that Santa Barbara wouldn't tolerate a parking meter at every space. It's just a, it's kind of a blithe thing. We'd have to use a different strategy that was more, far more convenient and less visual, if you will, visually intrusive. And I would imagine, just like everything Santa Barbara, we would have a, the best operation, the easiest, you know, where you could park and get on your phone and pay with your phone. You wouldn't even need a cash or a credit card, you could just pay with your phone.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, no, we insisted that there were not going to be parking meters, you agreed. But my real question is, let's imagine that whatever system you use tomorrow is in place. I personally cannot see anybody saying, "Ah, not going downtown, I got to put a quarter in the meter," or whatever the equivalent is. I don't see that happening. The most it would be would be, "Damn, the thing's running out, I got to go back and redo it again." It's hard for me to agree that this would reduce parking, or much less that the DO or anybody in the so-called stakeholders would want it. But address that, please. Criticize, counter-speak me if you want.
I think you're right, from what I think I understand what you're saying. It actually makes people park more on the street who are coming downtown to do business because there's more parking available for them. The thing that, remember, the traffic, the people that are causing the traffic congestion are the people who are arriving in the morning hours and leaving in the afternoon, the commuters. They're not, they're not the same generally, they can be, but of the people who are coming down to do business and commerce. Employees obviously do that, you know, throughout the day, lunch, but the main commerce is going to be other folks. So, what the employees are now doing is, the studies are showing, they're using the on-street parking to have free parking during the day. And so, when we, when we charge for minute one for on-street parking, they're going to have to move somewhere else. The incentive will be, some will pay, but the incentive will be for them to find free parking three to four blocks away, or take another mode of transportation.
Okay, so, right now, we're doing the shuffle, to some degrees. We're parking up in some of the residential areas and walking to work and not having restrictions. How does that change?
So, if we have price parking in certain areas, then the employees will less likely park on the street right in front of the business, because then they're going to be charged. And remember, we're only talking about shifting a few, we're not talking about changing everybody's mind about behavior. We're only talking about a small percentage of behavior. So, there will be employees who still drive to the downtown, and then they'll just choose to park maybe the three blocks away from the price parking in a neighborhood, for instance. But the consultant is saying that it would shift the behavior enough to accommodate the incremental growth that we're, a good portion of the incremental growth we're talking about over 20 years.
How does the fact that we have parking places now downtown that are painted red that don't have to be? When we were looking at De La Gara Plaza, one of the arguments was, for those who wanted to change parking there, was that, hey, we can just go out and, you know, with a paintbrush virtually increase parking, available parking by 32. I don't remember what the number was, but it was significant. And I've gone around and looked, and, you know, you see like, God, there's a parking place there. It's not next to a fire hydrant, it's not that close to an exit, whatever. You can find a whole bunch of those just with the naked eye. So, using those as opposed to pricing, how would that benefit what we're trying to do, which is, A, help businesses, but also relieve parking stress downtown?
Okay, so, and for the conversation, you could, I don't know if you noticed, just switched to parking supply and away from traffic congestion. So, they're very different issues. So, like, we could increase the parking supply perhaps, and that might have the opposite effect and create more employment opportunities for parking and a greater freedom to park in the downtown. But what parking pricing is a little bit different, it's taking the existing supply of parking and now saying from minute one, there's a cost for that, a premium cost for that space, and therefore, the consultant believes there's the portion of the employees who will not want to pay that or will park somewhere else, and that, and that portion equates to a reduction in traffic congestion to and from the downtown. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of theoretical to me, I don't really see it. I need to look at this more, but. One of the problems with all this is that in Plan Santa Barbara, it says, you know, one of the first things that we ought to do right out of the gate is take a survey of where people who work downtown live, and how they're getting to work. And yet, well, there's a portion of Plan Santa Barbara that talks about surveying existing employees, and yet, we're making assumptions here on existing employees. John, you want to speak to that a little bit, or not?
Not sure where the surveys.
I'm not sure where it is either, but it's in there somewhere.
I believe there was a request to do a survey, and the DO requested it, and I think we did insert that as a policy here, just as a response to their request.
Okay. All right, but still, my point is, we're making a lot of assumptions minus data. It sure would be more interesting if we had the data to know what we really ought to do. I'm not, I'm not coming down too heavily on your parking measures, I'm just trying to say, you know, we're shooting, it's like, well, does the gun work? Yeah, but you shoot in the dark, what are you going to hit? We don't know what we're shooting for here.
Well, actually, we absolutely do know, and this is not shooting in the dark by any means. We've done a lot of statistical information gathering. We have, we have, we've really erred on the side of the conservatives, so the numbers you're seeing will probably work out even better, more favorable. So, we've been very, very careful to end up statistically on the conservative side for everything we've said, including like, use of alternative modes. Like, we didn't even include bike and pedestrian improvements, which would clearly have reductions in cars in the future with improvements. We only use that, which we could have empirical data from other communities which are similar to us, with national studies that have been shown directly how implementing certain things will have an effect. And I could tell you that pricing strategies, we have the most confidence in if they'll work or not, because they're the one, pricing, it turns out that economic changes are the most influential in behavior. So, the greatest relationship of reliability comes with the parking pricing analysis.
I agree, but I don't think it's going to convince or prevent somebody from actually commuting, but I don't want to, it's not a debate here.
Well, and it won't. It won't. There's only a small percentage that need to shift behaviorally. Most people will continue to do exactly what they're doing.
Sure. Mr. White?
Thank you. Can you refresh our memories on the, or this memory, and perhaps others will need it as well, on the commercial square footage? Where did Planning Commission end up in terms of its recommendation, and how does this number relate to that? Before, before PC, PC, and then this, this number?
Okay, I can relate to, or respond to that. And it has, it has been somewhat of a moving target in terms of the number. What we have settled on of late, the most recent recommendation is 1.35 million square feet over the next 20 years, and that would not include government buildings or pending and approved projects.
And was that the, that means I recall, there was a PC recommendation, there was a Coalition recommendation, and how does, how does this relate to those two figures? And then there was also a sort of end of Measure E number, or perhaps Plan Santa Barbara number before that, so.
Well, what we started with, I mean, at the end of 20 years, the, basically, the remainder of the existing amount is about 1.5. That's what's in the bank right now, if you will. And I believe the Planning Commission recommendation, and maybe you can correct me wrong, is 1.0 or, but it shifted around depending on how you calculate it, because do you calculate the government buildings in it, the pending approved? And so, like I said, it's shifted back and forth. I don't believe the Coalition, the Coalition actually came out with their own number. Yeah. And it was the, the council, it was pretty well settled, at least that was my impression when you last spoke of it, at 1.35 excluding the government and pending and approved. So, it seemed like there was pretty clear consensus on that.
Yeah, my memory also, for sure.
I just, Betty, we'd like to add a comment, that we were on schedule for your April 22nd meeting to review in more detail all of the background on the development plan ordinance, the amount of square footage, the different categories, as well as the findings and other things to anticipate with that ordinance. But just to confirm, the Planning Commission recommendation for the primary categories of the growth management was a million square feet, but we had analyzed in the general plan EIR a variety of scenarios, and the Planning Commission understood that there was another 500,000 square feet that could come from pending and approved projects, other background development, sphere of influence, a variety of other factors. But the EIR evaluated a number of, a range of several scenarios, and we'll be bringing you more information on all that at your next meeting on the 22nd. But the main shift was the council in its discussion. I think one of the council people that kind of led off on that was Councilmember House. We presented different options, and so, the 1.35 excludes, as Mr. Ledbetter said, the government buildings pending and approved projects.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions about the traffic demand management. I think I have had that finally beaten into my head over the years, so I'm good on that. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see here. So, let's, before we go on to the discussion of parking, why don't we see where we're at on these first two items? I'll be happy to lead off with my observations. Obviously, regarding, regarding item number one, of course, we don't want to increase traffic congestion if we can possibly accommodate that. And my only caveat would be that sometimes I feel that that policy is being used as a, as a justification for telling people how they are going to transport themselves. And so, I would like to make it clear that, of course, anything we can do to reduce traffic congestion, that's great. That's certainly something that we want to pursue, but we're not pursuing it by, for instance, forcing everyone to ride bicycles instead of drive cars. It's, it's all about, transportation planning ultimately is about planning for how people themselves want to get around. So, somehow, in my view, if we could incorporate language to that effect, I think that would be useful. With regards to item number two, I think a lot of what we've been discussing in previous sessions is about exactly this, locating residential development primarily in the city street grid infill, and implementing policy and land use strategies that produce a greater amount of workforce housing. Now, whether these strategies will actually be successful or not, that remains to be seen, but I certainly think that that is a large part of the justification for those policies. And so, personally, I have no disagreement with A and B. With C, I think the, my recollection, that compromise of 1.35 million, it was not easy to get to that consensus on council, and personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate trying to change it. And as far as the traffic mitigation measures, again, so long as it's clear that these, these tactics, I would call them rather than strategies, so long as it's clear that these tactics are things that may be implemented, and so, for instance, we had a long discussion about parking pricing at council, and made it very clear that this is not something that is going to happen unless the merchants, downtown merchants, who are the most affected by these kinds of tactics, unless it's something that they want, that we're not using these, we will not be implementing these regardless of what people want. We are not saying that this shall be the policy, we're saying these are possible tactics that may be used when appropriate. So, as long as we're clear that that's the approach, I don't have a problem with calling these out as possibilities.
Are we now making comments, then?
Yes. That was a comment.
It was. Anyway, thank you. Well, and I agree with what you've said, but with this addition, and with this addition, and that is that the compromise that was, that we came to on this commercial square footage is part of a package. It's part of an ecosystem that we're hoping to envision, and that, so that all of the issues about residential development fold in with this, with this piece. So, it doesn't get teased out and isolated as a, as a free-floating piece of land use activity, rather, it's an integral part of the, of the other land use decisions that are before council. So, I, my vision of this compromise is that it, it hopes to feed into the compromises of the, around the residential work, which we're still working on. So, it's in that context that I would want to just make sure that we're looking at them together as an integral package at one point, rather than trying to say, okay, you know, we're struggling with this stuff, let's approve these pieces in isolation. I would be uncomfortable doing that. So, just as long as we're finishing the work before moving forward, then I think that that works for me. And then, as I say, I certainly agree with you about stakeholders, buy-in on the traffic demand management, that's definitely part of the, of the work.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, just, I completely agree with you, Mr. San, it's just, Mr. San, Francisco. The, just philosophically, I think our function in government is to facilitate what people themselves want, and not, as you were saying, what we might think is best. So, and that ought to be the attitude of traffic, or really anything in the document. We're trying to make life better for people, not as we perceive it, but as they want it. So, that's, I mean, a very broad statement, but it sometimes contradicts what's in here, I believe.
Is that it?
It is.
Do you feel instructed and directed?
I do.
Okay.
Do you? John, too.
Very good.
Okay. And then, moving on to parking. Now, when we talk about parking, and specifically, this next question, three, is related to a specific parking at multifamily dwelling units. And although we're going to be talking about parking, it's really not about parking. It's really about the size, bulk, and scale of buildings, the housing types, and how parking functions on a site. And the background, of course, and I think you've heard it already, is that the architects, the first place they're calling is the Transportation Planning Division to say, "How many spaces do I really, really need? And can I put them here or there? Does this work, or does that work?" Because the parking kind of is the hardest part to fit, and until the parking fits, you can't, you got to build around the parking. So, so the questions are related to controlling, using the parking up or down, more parking, less parking, to control how the building feels and functions. So, with that in mind, the question three, if neighborhood protections of the on-street parking supply can be put in place, should the city reduce parking requirements? And maybe a better way to say that is, should the city incur parking maximums for residential housing within the downtown core? Right now, the downtown core parking requirement is one space per unit. No guest parking required, but as we've said, historically, people haven't done that. They've, they've, they've wanted to put more parking in. And should it be done to, and then here's, here's what you're trying to do. Should it be done, if we can do that, should we do it to reduce the size, bulk, and scale of buildings? Should we do it to increase affordability of housing? And then, if yes, for which housing types? Is it for rental, is it for ownership, employer housing? And if yes, to A and/or B, what should the per-unit requirement or parking maximum And then, if you want to include in your discussion, maybe it's appropriate, is the un-bundling, number four, really kind of relates to what you chose in the first one, but it can, even if you decide that you're going to not apply parking maximums, you could still have unbundling, which is-- have unbundling, which is simply decoupling the parking from the unit so that it's a separate cost. And the question is, should the city try to increase the efficiency and use of off-street residential parking by unbundling parking from? And then, there's really two options, or both, residential units or ownership units. And even with the ownership units, I would imagine there's a way to make it on a rental basis. In other words, the CCNRs could have the association own the parking and then rent them back to the owner. So there's different ways of doing it, and we can answer whatever questions you want.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the parking requirements, my recollection, and I was looking at the stuff a little bit earlier, I guess it's on the page three, it speaks to it. The one space per unit is only in mixed-use buildings, right?
That's right.
It's not in residential buildings that are solely residential.
If they're standalone, that ordinance doesn't apply.
Right.
The one space per unit. We haven't seen that yet, but you're right, it could happen.
Okay. Well, it's, what we've seen is tail wagging dog, where people put in a bit of commercial in order to benefit from the one space per unit element, as well as the setback accommodations, which apply to mixed use as well. And I, for one, think it's a, that the one unit, the one space per unit should apply to the downtown area and that it, I don't like seeing the, I consider it to be almost practically indisingenuous when people put in the, you know, the coffee kiosk at the front of a 20,000-square-foot building as their way of getting a mixed-use project. I just think we ought to call a spade a spade and allow the one space and to apply to the certain geographic area that we're talking about. So I guess I'll wait and see whether others have questions before going on.
Okay. Well, if we're looking to build workforce housing, we got to figure that we have to provide the workforce with what they need. And workforce housing is going to afford units downtown, is going to be a two-member family both working. And even if one or both are fortunate enough to find jobs downtown, anecdotally, from people I've talked to, who've said, yeah, I walk to work, I say, how many cars do you have? Oh, we both have one, two, in other words, two cars. So if we don't allow for two parking spaces, I don't think we're really going to be building workforce housing. If I was going to, if I were a builder, I would be happy to build just for, with one parking space. And then I'd run my campaign in Bakersfield, where the median market is cheap, and I know people would love to come over here, and they only need one space. And they've got a pied-à-terre to escape the heat of Bakersfield in the summer in Santa Barbara. So whereas we could sell those units, realtors would be overjoyed to do that, we're not going to be providing it for our workforce. So I realize that it throws off the scale and bulk and all that stuff to insist on two spaces, but if we're honest about trying to provide for people that we want to work down here and want to work in Santa Barbara, just no way around providing them two spaces.
I guess we've moved into the comment phase.
And I am willing to, having worked on this document all these years, I am willing to, particularly in the downtown area, to continue to work with the one space per unit, as I mentioned earlier. I think it's worth plugging into the adaptive management process as I'm envisioning it. And what my colleagues have talked about with the traffic demand management and not instructing people to ride a bicycle, how I've understood the traffic demand management going forward is that the next round of fruit, we've plucked all the low-hanging fruit of infrastructure, of what people want to do, which is to all, everybody get in the car at exactly the same moment to go somewhere. And the next round is taking some other routes and where people perhaps do take a bus or do some other things to get to, some portion, take other means to get to and from work. One analogy that helped me get this over the years was talking about the farmer's market, where the Tuesday farmer's market, at one point, there was a conversation that that market changes traffic patterns. It frees up space, enough space on the freeway to loosen up traffic a little bit. Just that little holding on of folks for a bit of time is, am I correct there? So I think that's an interesting, real-world example of something where just holding folks downtown voluntarily, you know, manipulatively by getting them to buy fresh vegetables is one way that has helped our freeway system. So that's, I picture this being another version of, an expanded version of that strategy. And I support it being part of our policy base.
Mr. Dayton, I feel as if A and B are little bit leading questions. Yes, of course, we would like to do things that would reduce the bulk and scale of buildings and increase the affordability of housing. That's all good stuff. My view is that when we artificially try to reduce parking below what the actual demand is, it's a disaster. And we have several good examples around town of retail spaces that don't have enough parking and that create problems in the neighborhoods around them. When we recently, a few months ago, before council, when we had the discussion of the BEVMO application, that was the main concern of the neighborhood, was overflow parking into the neighborhood. So again, A and B are good things, and certainly we want to achieve them if we can. I would not favor parking maximums. I believe, I agree with Mr. Hotchkiss, that the people who are developing and marketing housing usually have a pretty good idea of what the requirements will be in terms of So that's my view. I do not believe, I realize that if you, if we require the developers to provide less parking, of course, that's going to reduce their costs, no doubt about it. But I believe we need to leave it up to the people who are actually creating new housing to use their best judgment based on what they see happening. And maybe, you know, gas will be $14 a gallon, and they'll decide that they don't need as many parking spaces, and that's fine. But I don't think it should be a city policy to set a maximum number of parking places. As far as the unbundling is concerned, again, and this is something I've said earlier at council meetings, there may be cases where unbundling really works. So I'm not out to outlaw it, but it would have to be as a result of a very careful planning process, coming up with an ordinance that would allow it in such a way that it's not a terrible inconvenience to the people who are actually living there. And that's how I view it. I'm perfectly willing to support some kind of innovative looking at this and how we might make it work, but I'm skeptical.
Do you a question?
Sure, of course.
You were mentioning commercial developments that were a disaster. Can you give us an example or two of what?
The classic in my neighborhood is Trader Joe's on Delavina.
Okay. Thank you.
And Trader Joe's on?
Yeah, just so you know that that particular parking situation's not housing, so I just want to make sure that those that are listening not think that that is what we're talking about. And the other thing is that Trader Joe's was, we didn't design the parking lot for Trader Joe's. Trader Joe's came in like three, it was the third business beyond a boutique market, which I think was.
Tredon's.
Tredon's.
I'm perfectly willing to assign blame on that one to council. But that, to me, is an excellent example of what happens when you underpark regardless of what the use is. It's caused enormous problems, not just for the people who use it, but for everyone in the surrounding area.
Sorry, I didn't address unbundling before. I should have. To me, unbundling is, I think in New York City, where I think it works, you got a vertical city, you got great public transportation, whether it's taxi cabs, buses, or subways. And you only use your car occasionally. Often, it's to escape the city. So the fact that it's parked two, three, four blocks away, or even over in the East River, or wherever, it's not a big deal. And that's totally unbundled. You get out of town that way, but you don't use your car very often. So, but we're not a vertical city, and hopefully, we never will be. And our car usage is entirely different, above and beyond the fact that we don't have and never will have that kind of public transportation. So to take the ideal of, gee, it'd be great if we didn't have to put these two together, I think puts a strain on the relationship of the, or on the desirability of what you're doing insofar as the housing is concerned. Whereas, you know, we still shop here, but mostly using our cars. Some people use carts and walk, but not very many. So if you got to take your groceries from your car to your house three blocks away, that gets onerous quickly, you know, once or twice, and it's like, what am I doing? So I personally can't imagine unbundling working, but I'm willing to admit that my imagination is limited and would look at it. It's just that, so far as I've spelled it out, you can see, I'll see how it works here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm willing to give it a try. I think that it's, and I think the, one of the areas where we do have a commonality is in the restriction of the max, putting maxima on parking. I'm more willing to go along with allowing development of more spaces. So that's an area where I think we have a more common view. But I think that the bundling can work, and I think we've seen, I mean, I appreciate that Casa de las Fuentes is an affordable housing project, but we do see a situation where we have downtown workers, we have fewer spaces than zoning would normally require, and we still don't have a parking problem there. And it's one that's fairly well-monitored, too, so that I think that we're seeing a situation where that does work in all the ways that all three of us agree it should work, that it doesn't, it isn't imposing on the neighborhood. And again, I also just grant everyone that it's not a free-market situation there, and that does skew the numbers in a significant way. But I'm willing to go along with the unbundling.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, just one clarification, that, you know, really, what we're focusing on here are residential parking standards. And it's really important to understand, and that the public understands, the distinction here between commercial and residential parking standards. And we're not in any way, shape, or form proposing to reduce commercial parking standards. You know, commercial is huge generator of traffic, and residential is shown to be little, if any, especially if it's located in the downtown. And that's really what we're focusing on. And, you know, the examples that you use, Council Francisco, for BEVMO and Trader Joe's, I would agree, from a commercial sense, but we're not talking about that here, we're talking about the residential. Now, what Mr. Hotchkiss, Council Hotchkiss is talking about, and his reservations, you know, related to, well, they're going to have, you know, two working families, and they're going to both need cars. I think that argument applies to some degree, but it's just important that we understand that distinction, that we're talking not about the commercial high-traffic generator standards here. We're not reducing those at all. It's the residential that we're focused on, so.
And just to be clear, I'm aware we're talking about residential here. We don't have a lot of examples outside of some special housing authority-type projects of residential projects where we've contracted, we've reduced the parking standards. So when I use those examples that I just did, that's just to make the general point about what happens when you underpark a project regardless of the use. And also, we're primarily focused here, I believe, on residential parking, but in a commercial zone. We're talking about infill in the center city, so.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Chair, if I make, I'd like to chime in for a second on that historic project, the Trader Joe's project, having worked on that and having, and also as a private planner, having seen where the mistake, where I saw the mistake, anyway. And that was that what went in next door was the surgery center that is, it's the highest demand, parking demand possible. And of course, with doctors that insist upon having their private spaces, the city was missing what other jurisdictions have, a land use permit process, which would have said, what's going in here? What's the parking demand? And there'd been a closer look taken on the occupant of that speculative building that was built just as an investment, but without any restriction on what went in there. That was my recollection of the process that ended up in the perfect storm of taking two, you know, one low-volume use, one spec building that went in next door, and then boom, in came two maximum traffic and parking-inducing projects. So I hope that the city is, I know I was advocating at the time that the city get tighter on looking at those new occupancies so that we're not running into that anymore. I don't know how far we are in that direction, but it is something. I'm seeing a shake of Betty's head. It is something that I feel is a useful tool going forward in the commercial districts so that we don't end up in those predicaments.
Okay.
Okay. And then, just question five, is just referring to the policy language, anything general that you wanted to bring up.
Fellow committee members?
Oh, and also, just to let you know, that this does reflect the earlier direction of council. Nothing's been changed.
Right.
So you're looking for changes in actual language in the document here? Is that what you want now?
Sure.
Calling for it.
We're over here on the goals and, circulation goals and policies and implementation.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I think this might be a good time to take some public comment on this topic and others. In fact, why don't we, why don't we take public comment on these transportation topics? And after, Mr. Dayton, will you be doing the air quality presentation, or who will be doing that?
I will be.
Okay. And after Mr. Ledbetter's presentation on air quality, we'll take public comments on that topic. But for now, if there's anyone who wishes to speak on the transportation, circulation part of this, please make your way to the lecturn and announce yourself.
Mary Louise Daye, speaking as a citizen at this point. I agree with many of your comments about the circulation and parking policies, especially Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. Francisco, and with Mr. White's recent comment. I live out in the San Roque area, and I try not to use the Trader Joe's parking lot. It's horrible, and mostly because of that surgery, which really is like an assembly line, people in and out all the time. And I beg to differ a little bit with Rob. It does affect the residential parking because it affects residential areas, and the employees park all over Samarcand Avenue, Samarcand Road in the lower section. And similar with the, possibly with the BEVMO. I am still very much opposed to the priced potential. I am still very much opposed to the priced potential, or the possibility for priced parking downtown. If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's still a parking meter, even though, even though it's said to be, you know, the kiosk. There still can be ugly street furniture, you still have to fuss with paying for it, you have to remember it. It's just, I think it could be very detrimental to downtown parking uses and to businesses. Unbundling, I think, really works best where you have a controlled population, and you know how you can regulate their number of automobiles and so forth. It's really touchy to, potentially ill-advised, I think, to try to reduce our parking requirements any further and to impact the nearby residential areas. Now I will speak as the chairman of the Citizens Planning Association's General Plan Update Committee. We met to consider your agenda for the meeting today. First of all, we want to express our support for the general approach you have taken to the question of density, namely that, one, significant deviations from the city's current density limits for new market-rate housing developments should be considered on an experimental basis, and that, two, the results of a limited number of such experiments should be evaluated as part of the adaptive management program. We believe that such a pragmatic principle should be applied to each of the three large items on today's agenda: the circulation and parking policies, the air quality, highway setback policy, and the adaptive management policy. Regarding circulation and parking, we enthusiastically support the first principle listed in the agenda, quote, "affirm existing city policy to accommodate incremental land-use growth without increasing traffic congestion," close quote. We believe, however, that the degree of congestion should be monitored and analyzed with increased
this is on private land, off-street parking places are downtown?
concern for the health of residents, workers, shoppers, and visitors within urban limits.
I mean, here's a huge, blocks and blocks of pavement that, because most, or many shops,
For instance, the monitoring should address not only intersections near the freeway, but also any impacted intersections, as well as the stop-and-go traffic between particularly busy intersections in the entire area where most of the incremental land-use growth is
many businesses, including the county, have huge parking lots.
projected to occur.
And of course, they're not used, they're vacated at night when everybody goes home.
Likewise, any significant change in parking policies should be considered experimental until data are available and analyzed about their impact on downtown businesses, historical
And couldn't, this needs to be factored in to the parking situation.
areas, and all affected residential neighborhoods. Last but not least, we believe that the current plan of permitting 1,350,000 square feet
And I do want to point out, on the commercial, we need commercial for our tax base.
of new commercial development, plus the unknown amount of increase in several exempt categories
We don't need to discourage commerce.
of non-residential development, will have a very adverse impact on the city's traffic and parking conditions by further aggravating our jobs-housing imbalance.
And on the plan, I think the plan that's published here, I don't think we need to
Thank you.
Thank you.
list, I thought this was a general plan, not a specific plan, and you list a whole series of intersections. It has been my, living in Santa Barbara for a great many years, it has been my observation that the traffic at intersections changes as, due to circumstances, like this mention of the farmer's market. The farmer's market, the Tuesday farmer market certainly changes traffic patterns, and anything that changes traffic pattern. For example, to get from Mission Canyon area where I live to Milpus, I used to use Olive Street, but now they've blocked it up with roundabouts and other traffic impediments, probably good for the neighbor, good for the residents, but I don't use Olive Street anymore, it's too difficult. So I use Garden Street, which is much, goes much smoother. So the traffic changes as the conditions change, and that has to be factored in, that an intersection that is impacted now may not be impacted 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Forest.
My name is Mickey Flax, I'm speaking for myself. First of all, I'd like to point out that if anybody goes to Trader Joe's up and down Southern California, they have some sort of gimmick whereby every one of their parking lots is impossible. I don't know what it is, but it's true in West LA. The only place it isn't true is out in Galida, where Trader Joe's came into an already-existing mall. But even on Milpus, where nobody is supposed to shop because they're homeless, it is impossible to park, it is impossible to negotiate the parking lot. Trader Joe's generates, I think, 10 times more traffic than other stores, or something. Anyway, I think the most important thing about the circulation element here is something that Rob did say, that it is part of and cannot be considered separate from the whole question of congestion and the whole question of housing, and the whole question of size, bulk, and scale of that housing. Parking has been driving development, the nature of development, has been driven by parking in this city for too long. It has created the larger buildings, it has created more congestion, it has allowed people to see Santa Barbara as a commuter city, and it's just, the parking rules have been countered to the other things that we hold dear in the development of Santa Barbara. I live on the edge of downtown, in a residential area, there's not a commercial spot for three blocks from my house. And what happens is that all day long, on the weekdays, there is not a parking spot to be found, because the employees from downtown are parking on my street. Now, I don't object, I think streets are for parking, I have no problem with that. However, it is a form of subsidy that the public is given by building and repairing and maintaining those streets to the downtown business owners, where there's no other parking for employees. So rather than that kind of subsidy, I would say that it's not a question of forcing people to do what they don't want to, it's making it easier for them to do what they might otherwise not be able to do. So for instance, a bike lane isn't saying that you have to bike to work, it's saying, if you want to bike to work, we as a city will make it safer and easier for you. And those are the kinds of things that I think the plan is proposing, things that help people to reduce their use of the automobile within the city. Even people who, you say, New York with its vertical housing, and people who don't have cars, many, many, many people, I don't know what percentage, but very high, don't have any cars at all, and yet they shop. And for a long time Costco did not, and other big-box stores did not want to come to the New York area, now they have, because they find that people will share a car and manage with shopping carts. I grew up with shopping carts my whole life, and it worked, as long as there was an elevator in the building, you could bring your groceries up. And now, of course, there is everywhere. So it is possible for people to live in a way that's different from the suburban lifestyle that we have always looked at as somehow the ideal. It turns out that maybe it's not the ideal. It's the ideal for some folks, but it's at a cost to the rest of us. And anything that we can do that will help create infill and development in the downtown urban core, that will reduce dependence on the automobile, will save people money, will save people's lungs, and will help us with our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flax. Onward and upward.
Did you have any more comments on the policies?
Right, right, right. On the...
Specific edits you're talking about? Rob, you're asking about specific edits to text and stuff. My suggestion on that is that there are a number, and I don't know if others have them, but it would be onerous to go through them specifically here, and that I should better put them down in writing and send them to you, and then we can circulate them, and people can adjudicate themselves.
And I might just add that these sections here were considered by the full council, based in large part on Councilman Hotchkiss's recommendations, that's what's reflected here.
And I recognize that.
And I think there was a straw poll vote on most of these, but I just, we were just thinking if there's any other little tweaks or little changes you wanted, this would be a good time, and we could make them now.
Well, I recognize that and appreciate it, but yeah, there are other things that I think we still need to do, as I said before, of giving you something in writing, so you can look at it.
Okay, Mr. White? Okay, I think we can consider that one closed.
Okay, so we'll move on to the second item, air quality, highway setback policy. And I'll move right into the questions here. First one, what setback distance from Highway 101 should be established as the interim air quality policy for new residential development? And we say interim, because this is really, the whole issue is being generated by the California Air Resources Board that came out with this recommendation. It wasn't a mandate, but a recommendation, that states jurisdictions look at 500 feet as a residential buffer to limit future growth. So the question is, do we want to go with what their recommendation was? And this was issued in 2005, but with the caveat that it was derived from, at this point, fairly outdated year 2000 diesel particulate data with higher traffic levels than, that are occurring or are projected in Santa Barbara. Or what staff has recommended over the past year and through the planning commission is to go with a more detailed study that we had URS conduct for us, and they concluded that 250 feet would be sufficient for now, supported, and their study was supported by more local, up-to-date and detailed 2008 analysis of local traffic levels, local diesel particulate levels, and local climate conditions. So that's the first question. And then, of course, the second question is sort of a corollary of that and relates to that, and then, so how that would affect our land-use policies in terms of, you know, our densities and the overlays. But, so, the first question then is really the 250 or the 500 feet, how do you feel about that, and what's your kind of take on that?
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Hi, Mr. Ledbetter, is that 250 versus 500 solely a health issue? Is this documented here?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Clearly, this area is less expensive land, I would say, closer to the freeway, tends to be less valuable, or not? Am I making this too simple?
Well, in some cases, it's residential, but in some cases, it's also commercial property as well, as it swings under, you know, the turn there. So it does affect that. But I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's mostly geared towards residential, though, and not so much commercial build-out.
Do we have any ramifications that, because I didn't see it spelled out here, maybe I just missed it, of doing the 250 versus 500? Is it, in a sense, it's sort of a taking, is it not, for somebody who has a potentially residential property they want to develop, and now we're saying, no, you can't do it, if we went with the 500?
Well, the way that the policy is structured, is drafted, is that if somebody has an existing residential unit, they can add to that. But if somebody's going to build something new, then I believe we have it limited to single-family? Is it, they can't build multifamily? Maybe you can help me with that. Ms. Shelton?
Barbie Shelton. The policy, which is on attachment, 2A, basically says, "New development of residential or other sensitive receptors, excluding minor additions or remodels of existing homes or one unit on vacant property, within 250 feet of US 101 will be prohibited in the interim period until California Air Resources Board phased diesel emission regulations are implemented, and/or," and this is some language that we put in with discussion of council, "and/or until the city determines that diesel emission risks can be satisfactorily reduced, and that we would monitor." So we really are talking about new development of residential within the 250-foot setback from, basically, the travel lane.
Right, and that "and/or" is in there, because we acknowledge that technology for trucks, or even cars that are diesel, is, seems to be changing pretty fast, and whereas a diesel truck may have certain emissions now, two years from now, it could be a whole different kettle of fish. Is that correct?
Yes, I think part of that came out of a couple of recent projects that were processed for permits within that distance. And they were designed to try and actually, on the site, mitigate to the extent of putting outdoor living areas on the side away from the freeway, having, you know, good seals and closed windows on the side towards the freeway, and putting a lot of vegetation that helps to screen things. And so the staff felt that, you know, the original language was very much key just to California Air Resources Board regulations, and that we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility in there to determine, if we determined, other than through those regulations, through monitoring or whatever, that the emission levels were sufficiently low, and/or there was a specific project that could mitigate, that we would have some flexibility.
Right, thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hotchkiss, do you have further questions?
No, not right now.
Why don't we just do questions now, then we'll have public comment, and then come back? Mr. White?
Thank you. And that, what you just said, Ms. Shelton, dealt with the concern that the, the original 500-foot setback was recommended or required based on sort of Highway 405 criteria, whereas we're dealing with a freeway that's much lighter and has much less traffic, and our, the conversation, as I recall, it was that our freeway would not have the impacts that the state was thinking, thinks is happening on freeways in general. And so that's where our 250 comes in, we just have freeway light rather than LA freeway.
Yes, the original 2005 guideline from California Air Resources Board was a very generic, overall kind of guideline recommendation. And again, it wasn't a requirement, it was a recommendation. And it was based on data from 2000 on diesel particulate levels throughout the state. They had maps of different areas, and they also, you know, looked at traffic levels, but using these very highly urbanized areas with large numbers of diesel trucks. And their particular concern in their report was really areas that had very...
Thank you. And that, what you just said, Ms. Shelton, dealt with the concern that the, the original 500-foot setback was recommended or required based on sort of Highway 405 criteria, whereas we're dealing with a freeway that's much lighter and has much less traffic. And our, the conversation, as I recall, was that our freeway would not have the impacts that the state was thinking, thinks is happening on freeways in general. And so that's where our 250 comes in. We just have freeway light rather than LA freeway, is it?
Yes. The original 2005 guideline from California Air Resources Board was a very generic, overall kind of guideline recommendation. And again, it wasn't a requirement, it was a recommendation. And it was based on data from 2000 on diesel particulate levels throughout the state. They had maps of different areas, and they also, you know, looked at traffic levels, but using these very highly urbanized areas with large numbers of diesel trucks. And their particular concern in their report was really areas that had very high levels of diesel traffic going to, you know, highly industrialized-type areas. So we went ahead and had our own city-specific study that looked at our own meteorological conditions, our own traffic levels, which are lower than what was used by CARB, as well as the new CARB modeling, which recognized that they had also put a number of regulations into effect already that had lowered diesel emissions throughout the state. Their own, CARB's own maps showed that levels in 2000 versus levels in 2008, that they had been reduced quite a bit. And so our consultant, air quality consultant, determined that, in their view, the same level of health benefit as was intended by the overall state guideline could be achieved in our area with a 250-foot setback.
So how does that, we've already made that determination, so this, does this statement, does not this statement, this proposed policy reflect what we've done already? I mean, I'm reading this, that some more is going to happen in the future before this decision is made. And whereas we've already made these analyses that the 250 is equivalent to the state 500.
We have. That was why the Environmental Impact Report found that with 250 feet, that would be a sufficient mitigation.
Equivalent.
And that's been the DAF recommendation and the Planning Commission recommendation. However, we've received quite a bit of public comment suggesting that we should go ahead and use the more conservative state guideline of 500 feet. So that's really where we're at right now, is just making that final determination.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I might just add that that kind of dovetails into the next question there of, should that proposed residential designation for the interim setback be modified per coalition? The coalition was the one that was coming out with the 500, and that was part of their compromising, you know, and as you say, the whole ecosystem balancing dance kind of thing. So, yeah.
Ms. Shelton, I have one question. Is there any state law or regulation that forces us to adopt some standards such as this?
There's not a specific law that specifically says that we must have this type of regulation, no. We do have a responsibility to, you know, look at health risk issues as a part of project reviews or environmental reviews. And, you know, the state Air Resources Board felt it prudent to, you know, have this type of buffer until diesel particulates could be brought down further. But it's not specifically a requirement. I don't think there are very many jurisdictions, in fact, that have adopted this policy at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and Mr. Chair, we would want to be avoiding a class-one impact, environmental impact, would be one of the things that we'd be conceivably looking for in policies such as these, is to
Yes.
avoid significant impact.
Any other questions? Okay, why don't we have comments from the public?
Good afternoon, staff committee members and staff and other audience members here and at home. I am continuing with Mary Louise Day's report about the meeting that the Citizens Planning Association's General Plan Update Committee had. And in the last minute, we kind of went through some of our earlier recommendations and adjusted them to the current situation in which, for density, you seem to be moving towards a cautious attitude of first introducing the potentially lesser impact, and then, if experimentally more is done, then move towards approving some more intensive development.
Mr. Hernadi, unfortunately, I forgot to ask people to identify themselves. Could you please, for the benefit of the public?
Well, I should remember that after all these years of public speaking. My name is Paul Hernadi, and I am a member of the Citizens Planning Association's General Plan Update Committee. So concerning the quality of highway setback policy, we believe that the guidelines issued in 2005 by the California Air Resources Board for new residential developments and other sensitive land uses like schools should be observed. These CARB guidelines were endorsed in recent comments by the Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District on Plan Santa Barbara's Environmental Impact Report of 2010. So they were aware of what the city was planning to do, and strongly endorsed instead the 500-foot setback. The demand of those agencies for a 500-foot buffer between highways such as US 101 and 101, and new sensitive land uses, is based on a multitude of scientific studies. By contrast, Plan Santa Barbara's reduced requirement of a 250-foot buffer is proposed on the basis of just one analysis of local conditions and hoped for future improvements in these particular levels. We believe that it is unwise to reject the expert advice of state and county agencies until the hoped-for improvements actually materialize, and factual pollution measurements are taken in the affected areas to bear out the theoretical claims of the commissioned study. We note, for example, that the 2008 study's claims ignored the combined impact of highway traffic and such local factors as diesel-powered ocean shipping and railway traffic, frequent meteorological inversion effects between the ocean and the mountains, and occasional periods of very high pollution in our area due to the lingering effects of major wildfires. And I would just like to add to this, outside of the committee-approved statement, that the Air Resources Board's recommendations are not quite as general as one might think, because they specify that highways with traffic of more than 100,000 daily trips should be subject to these guidelines. And of course, 101, at several points in the city, has well over 100,000 daily trips. So this is how we feel that it would be wiser to first accept these recommendations, and once we have more evidence that a lesser distance between the freeway and residential developments is acceptable, move towards that kind of standard. I should mention that, of course, all this applies only to residential and other sensitive land uses. So a property owner who has land which would fall under the 250 or 500-foot recommended buffer could very well develop the property with commercial uses. So it is, in no sense, such a taking as might be litigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay.
Chair Francisco. I was looking for a member of the public who I know wanted to speak. He may come back at another time, so there'd be another...
Okay, if he does, we'll certainly accommodate that.
It's Danny Kopus from Coach Beach.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, comments from the committee?
Well, my inclination is to be conservative, but it's, in this case, means the opposite of what is implied here, and so I'd go with a smaller restricted zone of 250 feet. And no, I have nothing beyond that to say.
Okay, Mr. White?
Thank you. I'd like to go back and look at the staff study, the staff work that was done on this again. I apologize, I just, well, I did read the packet that was here. There's, I think that there's a pretty good argument being made for the 250. So I'm, I know this has bounced back and forth, and I do, again, I put this even in with the commercial development aspect of things, that the package is important to me. And so I'm going to just abstain at this point and say, I need to look at the staff work on this again before I come down on it again.
Fair enough. My own feeling on this is, I don't believe that this level of specificity is warranted right now. I think that the technological change in emission standards and emissions over the period of the general plan are highly unpredictable. And personally, I don't want to add this new setback requirement at all. I would be comfortable with general language that said, should it be determined that there was a significant health risk, then that would be something for the ordinance committee to look at, for instance. But I personally don't support establishing a setback. So you've got a mix of opinions here.
Yeah, so there's, you know, Ms. Shelton is pointing out that as part of the coalition proposal, they were sort of bifurcating it into two issues. One of them was the setback, where the, the future development would be restricted, but then it's also the issue of the density, and it's kind of an overlapping issue. And if you have, how far would you run back the overlay, for example, because the overlay would come there. So, but to me, it's a fairly related issue. So I don't know if you have any specific comments on that?
No. Well, my comment remains the same. I don't think that this should be determinative.
Okay. No, I'll have another answer, a clearer answer for you at the council session on this, after I look at, when you hand me that.
We'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you. Another copy, because I'm sure I've had one of them down. Thank you.
That's easy enough to do. Okay, the third item then is the Adaptive Management Program, and what we refer to as AMP. The Adaptive Management Program is proposed to monitor the results and evaluate the progress and effectiveness of the general plan policies and programs in order to make the requisite adjustments to achieve the identified goals and objectives of the plan. Examples of policies and program areas include water resources, non-residential development, traffic mitigation, and affordable housing. Following the adoption of the general plan, and I would add here, a formal AMP is proposed for the first-year implementation measure. And the reason I say that is because, in effect, we have an informal, you know, monitoring and assessment program for various different things. I mean, just yesterday, you looked at, you know, the long-term water plan, and that, in effect, is an AMP. We do that regularly. We monitor, we assess, you know, make policy adjustments as necessary. We've done that regularly with Mejere, with our non-residential assessing that, going back to the Planning Commission twice a year. Now, we didn't, that is an example of something where we collected data and reported on it, but we didn't necessarily have it formalized to the point we have with the water plan, where we have actual set objectives and indicators that we measure up against and that kind of a thing. So the reason I, the reason I raise that is because that leads directly into, actually, number two. Well, let me, let me read number one first. The first question, is the proposed program, instead of policy objectives, to set policy objectives, establish indicators of policy results, collect data, and establish reporting frequency, an appropriate approach? If not, what needs to be modified? And then, as I said, the reason I point out this difference between what we're doing today and what's being proposed in, you know, a formal approach, is the way we envision this happening is that, should the proposed citywide program begin slowly utilizing existing data collection or reporting mechanisms that are already in place, such as those employed for water resources, non-residential growth, affordable housing, and high-density housing. In other words, the thought here is, you know, we set up a standardized program, and we use these metrics, if you will, that are listed here under number one, but we do it in a very controlled way to see, in effect, how the AMP is working, you know? And that way, we can control costs a little bit better, and we're not enacting a whole big, huge new program. But it's basically working with what we got and making it more effective and meaningful. So I'll kind of leave it there for now.
Questions from the committee?
Yes.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
If we didn't do this, what would we do, just as a way of illustrating what we got going on, what this could do? If we did not have an AMP program at all, what would that mean?
Well, we would continue to, continue to do the levels of monitoring we have now, but as I said, it wouldn't be a comprehensive program, and it wouldn't be formalized in the sense that, you know, we set common types of objectives and how regular reporting periods, and have it as a program versus sort of a scattered approach that we have now. So we are, that was kind of the point I was trying to make, is we are doing some of it now, and we would continue to do that, but it just wouldn't be formalized, and...
And we could do this if we adopted it, or adopted it, with existing staff? No hires?
Presumably, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. White?
I think I just can do it in statements, so...
Okay, very good. Is there any public comment on this topic?
Paul Hernadi, and just with a very brief comment. Thank you. I'm Paul Hernadi, and continuing the statement by the Citizens Planning Association's General Plan Update Committee. With due diligence, we also studied this third item on your agenda. And as mentioned before, we support the adaptive management program, insofar as it allows the city first to adopt prudently cautious policies, and then to proceed to fully embracing some innovative approaches after the results of potentially promising experiments have received positive evaluation. For the program to work this way, it should be as accurate and data-driven as possible without neglecting qualitative measurements for the city's success in preserving or enhancing our historical and aesthetic resources, community character, and quality of life. It should begin within one year, using existing kinds of data, and gradually develop new methods for the collection and evaluation of new kinds of data, for example, the measuring of actual air pollution and tsunami readiness. We wish you luck and continued endurance in the current phase of this multi-year effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question that is sort of related to adaptive management.
And could you please state your name?
Deborah Slate. I had a question regarding the R3 and RFU4 zones your committee was considering for the experiment of high-density overlay. It was unclear what the conclusion or your deliberations was. What was the density that you decided on?
Kellum to Forest. I would like to know, Mr. Hotchkiss alluded to this, is how much is this going to cost? I think that's important to know. And in that, what adaptive management are not currently covered? I mean, you mentioned some that you were already doing, but there, which ones are not being done at this time would be interesting to know. Also, you need to indicate in the... Also, you need to indicate in the general plan in print that, where you say, develop a comprehensive APM plan, oh, that's comprehensive, but I think it would be important to indicate somewhere that a number of these programs are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miki Flax. I think that the adaptive management plan is a terrific idea, and I think it's far superior to any attempt to put an artificial number on the number of units, whether it's 100, or 200, or 500, and then do evaluation. I think the adaptive management plan that is driven either by the calendar or by a change, a significant change in certain monitoring parameters. So, for instance, if air quality is monitored on a regular basis, and suddenly there's a significant change, a significant decrease in the quality of air, that would trigger a review. So, the management plan would be to make sure that those monitoring programs in all areas, I don't mean geographic areas, I mean all the areas of the plant, be in place, and then both on a calendar basis and on a trigger basis, it would make it to policy changes or consideration of policy changes, rather than any kind of arbitrary number about the number of units developed.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the committee? Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I feel like I don't have enough here to grapple with what I have been envisioning on this activity as it goes forward. Let's just say, on residential development, I would appreciate a little more of a menu about what my options are, what would be, and I appreciate Mr. Hotchkiss's point about, we don't want to be creating a whole new department, or, you know, again, we've got enough Frankensteins out there already, let's, how can we be efficient and smart about it? But to just have a little bit more of a cafeteria about, okay, what would be my hierarchy on, and what's going to be, what's going to be the most important area? Well, maybe it's going to be residential and traffic, those two examples. And then, under residential, what are going to be the things, on-street parking, air pollution, et cetera, you know? And then, that would help me, I mean, just to sort of, when I see the words, well, let's just go slow on it, I could see, I can envision that thing, well, we're not going to get there with a look at what we've done, whereas I want to be able to give a reasonable, simple picture at the end of this either five-year period, or 250 units, or 100, whatever those, that benchmark that we get to. I then want to have a blob of information that everybody could say, well, we're starting to understand what happened, maybe we need more information after that, but maybe we don't. But so, I would like a little more specificity and a little more help in coming up with what you guys would say would be, well, if you're in this situation, or your successors are, you know, trying to see what folks did five, 10, 15 years back, what would you want them to see as gauges for what we think of as important, as the spirit of Santa Barbara, and what would be important to the residents? So, I'm just not quite getting enough out of this going forward, although I do think that's the spirit that we've been talking about in this cycling backup information.
Yeah, I completely appreciate what you're saying, and basically, a little bit more detail of what the adaptive management program would be, and you cite some examples for residential in terms of looking at its relationship to traffic, on-street parking, air pollution. And I apologize that you didn't get these exhibits as part of your packet, but I believe they do provide you with quite a bit of detail in terms of how these will be set up, in terms of, you know, how we measure success, what the timeframes would be, our data sources, data issues, objectives, and indicators, how we come up with those, and then including some actual examples that we have begun to mock up. And so, for example, under housing, the second one, the housing objective, increased housing available for all levels of affordability by the year 2020. And it calls out for that one, you know, what the indicator would be, so for example, it would be the number and proportion of total and new affordable rental and ownership uses, units by household income category. So, that would be our indicator, those would be the things that we would use to measure.
What page are you on?
This is page four on those, the attachment that I gave you today. Well, no, it's the example towards the back, and at the top, it says, additional housing objective one. There you go. And so then, it says, okay, well, what does this indicator tell us? This indicator would tell us whether or not there is an availability of affordable housing has increased or not for different types of housing and different income groups. And it goes on, you know, it looks at the target, it looks at the data requirements, and then the data sources that we would use. It also talks about the reporting frequency in relation to our five-year housing element update, and now how that's shifting according to SB 375. And then talk about benchmarks and, you know, some examples. So, the attempt here was, you know, this was the first shot at structuring the program, and we did this for, I believe, six or eight different objectives. And this is just a sample of one, and then on the previous page, there's one for land use and growth management, objective one, sufficient or surplus resources and infrastructure capacity. And so, this one, of course, looks at water, wastewater, and solid waste. But again, it uses that, those same metrics and the same methodology of having the indicators that you're using, what those indicators tell us, what the targets would be, the types of data we would use, and the data sources. So, you know, without actually spending a lot more effort in actually developing the program, which would, you know, that would be what we would bring to you as a first part of implementation, and we would say, okay, well, you know, this would be the level of detail that we could bring to you in the first year without incurring a lot more costs and resources, and yet, we believe that these objectives are meaningful into meeting and testing the goals, and of course, you know, we'd have to do one of these for density, and for looking at higher densities, we'd structure it the same sort of way. But it does take some time to, I mean, we, it takes some time to develop those, and to figure out, you know, what's the most appropriate metrics to use for each one of the objectives.
Well, obviously, Mr. Chair, the staff has done a bunch of work on this already, and the initial paragraph didn't allude to the document which we've received, and obviously, this was part of, is that part of this document here? That this, I don't know where this, Exhibit G, I don't recall where that came from, and...
It was part of a planning, the planning commission had originally requested that we develop the AMP as far along as we could, and to present that to them.
So, that's like 18 months ago kind of thing, when that was?
It's been a while, yeah, and that's why the, and again, that's my fault, I apologize that this wasn't attached early on when we called it out. But it does, Attachment 3B is an excerpt from the planning commission's status report, and there's also a video presentation that goes along with it in PowerPoint that you can watch for the whole presentation on that.
Well, I feel like, I mean, I want to say that this does it, I certainly had recalled more work going on back in the day, but I didn't prepare for that today with, and I, obviously, we didn't have this to look at, but if I had been able to fork through the pile that I have from even pre-council days, I might have been able to find this or call staff, but I didn't do that or have that information available. Clearly, staff's thought about this, and we're conceptually on the same page with trying to do something practical, cost-effective, and satisfactory to our community, so that we, it's transparent, so people can go, okay, how is our traffic doing, and how are those basic elements affecting the city's character?
Okay, hi.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes. Well, I certainly don't have any problem with one and two, I mean, it's all constructive stuff. John, everything you said sounds good, but I, like all of us up here, haven't had a chance to look at this, so I'd like to look at what you just gave us, and can't comment on it now, but I'm positive in what you've said over here, so, I mean, adaptive management in some form seems to make sense, but I am, I do think we're going to have to say, we got to do it with existing staff, and not any hires or consultation.
My comment on this is really a general one, I think that the idea of an adaptive management program is a good one because it formalizes getting feedback on the effectiveness of the general plan. What this means to me is that community development, the planning department, will have clear guidelines, a routine that is applied to every major policy, just like every major policy that the council considers always has a financial analysis component attached to it. So, I think it's a good idea in principle, whether the, and I think at least the outline of what you've shown us of how the analysis and the monitoring would be done appear to make sense, but obviously, you're going to have to apply adaptive management to the adaptive management plan. And I agree with the proposal in number two, that we should start simple, start with the things that we've already been reporting on in an informal way mostly, with the exception of, say, water resources. And that's a good, simple way to go, start with the easy ones, and branch out from there. But I definitely think that this is, it's good to have this requirement attached to every major policy section of the general plan, so that we're constantly doing course correction over the 20-year life of the plan. Any further comments on this? Okay. Shall we go on to summarizing?
Yes, I'd like to turn back the discussion a little bit to, and it's a good segue into talking about preparing for the council meeting on April 19th as well. Earlier, and with each item, we've asked the committee to look at the policy languages proposed, and give us any direction on, or discuss amongst you any particular policy language. Earlier today, I'm sorry, I was engaged at the moment when the question came up again, should there be any discussion of the policies, and I think Councilmember Francisco said, oh, I can, not Francisco, Hotchkiss said, I can give you some input later. Well, that's actually what we don't want to do. The purpose of having the subcommittee discussion, and then subsequently coming to council, is that among the council, you discuss the policies, and if we are going to be drafting any amendments, we want that to be based on either a majority here or a majority at the city council. I think that's actually been a little bit of a frustration on the part of some council members, and I've had discussion about that, that they felt that in a meeting, something was discussed, and they think that the AMP, for example, maybe it shouldn't be here, but it's still here. So, I really would like the committee to perhaps take more time today on that, or at least discuss that we'll be deferring some of that discussion till your April 19th meeting. I just have a concern about independently receiving more input from one of the council people. So, with each item today, we did ask that question, and I don't know if you want to take a little bit of time to review that again, but my takeaway would be that on the AMP policy, just working backwards.
Sure.
You know, we could take a look at it, it's a brief policy statement, but it is discussed within the text of the general plan, and I think our policy statements, Attachment 3A, is a good general description. I wouldn't anticipate that you need or are directing any change to that, but it would be really good to confirm that. And then, likewise, working backwards, we had the one policy that you all looked at, 2A regarding the highway setback, and then 1A being the whole set of policies for the circulation element. And I realize that's somewhat laborious kind of work, but I do also think that that was why the subcommittee was created, that gave you, you know, a smaller working group and an opportunity to look more carefully at the policy language. Also, the same point forecasting to your next two meetings, which were to be our wrap-up, and, well, comprehensive review and wrap-up. The staff anticipation is that that is what we would indeed focus on, is having you all look at the policy language and come to the meeting so that we can work through and return to council. We may not actually revise it, but we could discuss the key ones that you debated revising if there's not a clear consensus. So, I really think that that will be helpful to all of us, you know, in reporting back to council, and ultimately getting a decision.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. White?
I didn't see 3A, is that the same as Exhibit G?
No, it's that.
Land use element.
It has the title, it has the title, land use element, and it's the draft policy, LG3 regarding living in resources and adaptive management.
Okay, thank you.
It's about six pages.
There it is.
Well, I'll lead off and say I'm personally comfortable with the statement here. I also think that the subcommittee comments on the questions that Mr. Ledbetter specified were useful comments as well, but certainly, I have no problem with the language in 3A.
I agree.
Yes, so do I.
2A, again, we heard your comments, and they were each distinctly different. So, this is one where you probably wouldn't direct any amendment, it's regarding the 250-foot setback, so we're good with that. You, in effect, discussed it, and we got the three various comments.
Right.
Okay.
No consensus, unfortunately.
Yeah. And then, on the circulation one, we, Mr. Dayton did mention that this reflects, well, it's fortunate or unfortunate, depending on the way you look at it, but it reflects the last time that the full council did that, and we actually did get word, a number of language changes in this policy. But I think that based on your discussion today, again, on some of these issues, it wasn't a consensus, but based on your conversation, we should be at least flagging the, and staff can do this, but with additional input from you, that would be helpful, flagging those policies where we should be, again, calling the council attention to, and perhaps amending the language. So, you know, listening carefully to what you talked about today, and it actually was somewhat similar to that prior council discussion. There may not be a lot of amendments further to these policies, and again, that's also staff's responsibility to go in and flag what we think's affected by your discussion. But we are looking forward to that kind of additional input from you all, either today or in, just as a heads up for the next two meetings, certainly.
And I might just add to that, that, you know, a big part of, a big outcome of when this was discussed last at the full council, was the addition of that wording under the implementation actions, possible implementation actions to be considered. So, these were things that were not going to be de facto implemented immediately with the adoption of this plan, but that would follow up and possibly be considered. So, just to remind you of that. um, considered. So just to remind you of that.
Right.
At your last meeting, for example, you did call out, "Take out that Form-Based Code policy and that kind of thing," so just wanted to check if, if as a group, you wanted to spend time on that.
Well, I think, based on the discussion we had earlier, for instance, uh, under parking policies, C 7.4, parking maximums, I don't think there's support for parking maximums on the subcommittee. Um, as far as, and we, we spoke also about unbundled parking, and I believe, if I recall, this C 7.7 language reflected a sort of a compromised position, and basically what I was saying earlier, that there may be ways in which unbundled parking could work, uh, but it's going to require a very careful examination by the ordinance committee and by the full council to come up with a way that zoning ordinance could be amended and actually make that work.
Right, and one of the key words that, that response to that was the word "allow" for, right. Okay.
So from my point of view, um, I would, I would suggest removing C 7.4. That's, if my fellow committee remember, members agree with that, that's, that's the only substantive change that I would suggest.
And I'm okay with that.
Excuse me, Ms. Wees, you had at some point said that there was somebody who wanted to speak, but had, was gone, or they come back?
Right. Mr. Copas joined the meeting, so whenever the chair...
Sure, I just want to, I'll leave that to Mr. Francisco.
Ms. Wees, do you have the, do you have the information you think you need for this?
Um, yes, it was also just, again, somewhat preparatory for the next two meetings that will be more on looking at the actual policy language. Um, we understood the direction for both staff and the committee.
Okay.
Is really to comprehensively look at the document and...
Absolutely.
And, um, this is a bit of a good segue into how we all want to report back to the, um, the council in just a few weeks, too.
Good, okay.
Oh, excuse me, if I could. So if I have questions on what actual wordage means here, you want me to ask them now? Okay. C 1.1, uh, bullet number one, "Provide high-quality pedestrian crossings as described in the pedestrian master plan that result in a high rate of vehicle yielding at uncontrolled intersections." Sounds like guns at the curbside or something here.
Sounds like ball bats, yes.
So Councilmember Hotchkiss, was, what that means is that some intersections that we have around town are, that are uncontrolled. A good example is De La Vina, the De La Vina corridor.
Right.
We have intersections where motorists do not yield. We have very low, low percentages of yielding to pedestrians.
I understand that, but what, what are the means that we're going to correct that with, is what I'm asking here?
There's all sorts of different things that we can do. Um, the one that's probably least tasteless that I hear on council is the curb extension where you get more visibility, uh, for the pedestrian.
Yeah, yeah, that's not gonna fly. What else? How about lights? Is that what we're talking about?
Lights can help.
Okay. Speaking of which, a number of people have come to me and said, you know, the lights that we have now, when you hit it, and it goes beep. Is there any way to make it so that when you hit it 14 times, it doesn't go 14 beeps? I don't know if that's possible. Just throw that one out. Um, okay, a few points down. Consider adoption of tiered development impact fees. Explain that. That's the bo- last one at the bottom of the page.
One of the things that we identified in C 6 are specific intersections that, that could be mitigated, uh, to account, to, to reduce traffic congestion anticipated by incremental land use development. Uh, considering adoption of tiered impact, development impact fees would be one way of funding those mitigations.
All right, so this is kind of a way of paying for things, is what you're saying here.
That's correct.
And I could provide an additional comment there. Anytime the city, um, wants to consider a development impact fee, we follow a procedure with, uh, the state law program that lays out that you assess what the impacts are, the cost of the improvement, and what are considered fair share or appropriate, um, uh, exactions towards creating, uh, towards addressing the problem. So consider adoption of a tiered impact fee program would involve returning to the city council with a, a fair amount of data about which impacts are being addressed and how they would be addressed and how much it would cost, um, a potential landowner developer to help solve or mitigate the problem.
Okay. Top of the next page. Improvements to bicycle travel ways and parking are a priority use of rights of way throughout the city. We have people, as you know, in the city that think that, uh, bicycles starting to get preference to cars. What, um, and that sort of says that. What, talk to me about what you're thinking here.
I think what this is, the way I would interpret this as a staff person is that when we're using the street right-of-way, and I think it's been actually amended from where it started out, so it's just changed over time, but I think what it means now is that we will use, uh, as a priority, uh, rights-of-way, city rights-of-way streets, the, the, the city controlled, whether it's in parcel or in, um, easement, the right-of-way for transportation purposes beyond the car for bicycle travel and parking.
All right, well, so you sort of lost me there. Let's give us an example. How would this affect residential streets?
Well, you, I think what it's saying is your, your, the priority is for, uh, to use the street right-of-way for bicycle travel and, well, and, you know, it's implied, cars, bicycle parking, bicycling, bicycling and parking, and maybe not use it for another type of use, um, that would prohibit the use of cycling. I think, I think the trouble with this one is it came from something else, and I have to look at the, the previous, the previous rendition of the policy, but it's further, it's much, it's further away from what the original intent was.
Maybe it doesn't belong here, or it just needs clarification, 'cause both of us are confused.
It could be taken out.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I mean, just go ba- let's go back and have a look and report back.
Could do that.
Just see what...
Okay, so there's a big question mark on that one. Um, all right, the next one down, C point 1.2. "In partnership with private interests, promote and provide incentives, including the provision of funding," boy, there's a red flag, "for shared-cost personal transportation options such as car sharing and bike sharing to increase personal mobility." Are you saying that, 'cause this seems to say that the city would pip it, chip in some money for bike sharing and car sharing programs?
Yeah, whenever, whenever there's programs that are emerging, it's very customary for the city to initially start it, uh, to get it going. Like, for instance, car sharing, there are companies and enterprises, car share, that, that are profitable, but many times, there is a partnership, private, public partner, private partnership to get the business off the ground, if you will, and then it could be at a greater advantage to the city. For example, if it's used a lot, then you would reduce, um, the number of cars in the city because people are using car share versus owning it.
Right, I would take exception with your model. I think that if it's gonna work, it's gonna work in private basis, and then we would allow it in the city. I know that there's a, um, car share program out at the university, um, that's, last I heard, sort of struggling and just getting going. I don't know if it's gotten going or died, and we had a bike sharing program out there that all the bikes disappeared and went south over the border. So, um, I'm just kind of doubtful about this one, whether it ought to be a city project at all. In other words, let's say it works, that's great, then we, you know, it's a, and it's a private, uh, venture, and we welcome it here, no cost to the city, but a great benefit to the city, but tentative investment, particularly in this climate, is probably not something we should roll the dice on. I don't know about how the others feel here.
Chair?
Mr. White.
Uh, are there examples of programs, uh, that, where this has happened so far, either at the city or county level?
Oh, I, I would say most of the car share, particularly with the industry just getting off the ground, most of the car sha- applications had a partnership involved in the cities that they operated in. Um, pretty much wholesale with bicycle sharing, but definitely with the car sharing as well.
So does the city of Santa Barbara have a car sharing program that it has initiated?
We've been approached, uh, many times, and, um...
Just haven't done one yet?
We haven't done one.
But is the county done? I mean, I'm thinking of the, you know, there's the cottage hospital stuff that's gone on, there's the county, there's the Clean Air Express. Are there any of those situations where...
I think from...
These private, so-called public-private partnerships have...
I think we agree with, um, the, kind of the tone of Councilmember Hotchkiss's, um, what he's saying is that the market needs to support, uh, what the, what they're doing and, yeah, and we haven't been interested in supporting, you know, private interests, and so we haven't seen a, a concept that, uh, has been worth investing in, that we thought could, you know, be supported. That, in other words, what we were being offered wasn't good enough, attractive enough to actually do it.
Right.
But we do anticipate that it will happen as, these programs are, are becoming more and more and more successful, and people are getting, they come, they're very easy to use.
I think that, if I could just offer this, that where they might be successful is on limited area university campuses. Um, and it's, I'm not surprised people are knocking on your door, because basically, it's a look, a search for venture capital, um, but that's not a city function. So, how about if we, I don't know if we can put wording in here that will monitor how it succeeds elsewhere, and if appropriate, we could adopt it here. Ms. Wees, I'll leave that up to you. Um, okay, could you explain C 1, mid-block traffic flow improvement techniques? It's actually supposed to be C 1.7, but it's, the 7 is missing, so right under C point, C 1.6.
Yeah, that was added as, um, one of the things we found in the Upper State Street study is that the mid-block, there, the mid-block, the, the intersection congestion doesn't tell the whole story, that there are, there's mid-block, I think the term we coined was friction, mid-block friction, that is also a concern.
Too many driveways in the middle of a block, that sort of stuff, right?
Mm-hmm, or, you know, left-turning vehicles, things that medians could, you prevent left-turning vehicles. So that was, uh, something that was an implementation strategy in the Upper State Street store, uh, corridor that was added here.
Okay, so it's, this is just a design comment here?
It's the, it's reduced congestion that's caused by mid-block issues.
Okay. Rubbing here, yes.
Perhaps, uh, since I did not ask for public comment on any topic, uh, and we have at least one person from the public who didn't get a chance to speak earlier, I'd like to open it up temporarily for public comment, including topics that weren't on the agenda today. So if anyone has a public comment, please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, Danny Copas, president of Coast Village Business Association. Uh, so I'd like to thank you, uh, for all of the hard work that everyone is doing in the room, and also for allowing me the time to speak today. I just have a few notes that I wanted to go over and a request. Uh, in 2006, the association was advised by a city council person, Brian Barnwell, to develop a vision plan for the road, and so from that point on, we did, uh, notify the city council that this is something that we were beginning the process of doing. Uh, we held town hall meetings, two separate town hall meetings. Uh, city staff attended as well as the, uh, mayor at the time. Uh, this was a few years back, and in October of 2008, we, uh, gave the city council a vision plan, so to speak. Uh, officially, it is called the Coast Village Business Association Proposed Coast Village Road Commercial Overlay District Architectural Guidelines and Development Standards. Um, we then, uh, were present at a city council meeting that was, from what we understood, to decide whether or not this was going to be implemented or folded into Plan Santa Barbara. We were told that we had not done enough work in order to get that done, and that we really needed to have more town hall meetings. What was particularly disappointing about that response, uh, and that, uh, that result from the city council at the time, is that if this were the case, uh, we were hoping that our city council liaison and city staff, who we, we had been working with, uh, during this time, had told us this. If we had known that we needed to do more in order to get this implemented, we certainly would have done more. We were under the impression that we had done enough, and so that is, uh, extremely disappointing, or at least was at the time and really still is. So we had decided, uh, from what we had heard, that it was a little bit too late to get into this, uh, and that our guidelines would suffice as guidelines for the city, uh, decision-makers when projects came up on the road, uh, but not something that could be implemented into Plan Santa Barbara. However, here we are today, still discussing Plan Santa Barbara, and again, this is two and a half years later. So, uh, this is our formal request. Uh, it seems that we should not be the only ones reaching out. In the past two and a half years, we have heard from no one, from the city, uh, staff or council, as to how we can get at least some of the points in these guidelines implemented into Plan Santa Barbara. So this is a request to have these guidelines implemented, or to at least let us know what we need to do to get these guidelines or some of these guidelines implemented.
Is that, is that it?
Uh, that, that, that is our basic question. I mean, we would like for there to be a vote on this, um, to be implemented into the city plan or the Plan Santa Barbara. Um, but I, I, to be honest, I am not sure if that's something that, that we can ask at the ti- really, we have had no communication, and, uh, we have been, I feel, the only ones that have reached out.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Mr. Copas. I'm, we'll be, we'll be talking about this some more.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Copas, do I understand that staff has this, uh, proposed Coast Village Commercial Overlay District?
Staff has had it for two and a half years.
Okay.
Since October 14th, 2008.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Francisco, would you like me to provide any information on that?
Sure.
I am now. Um, actually, uh, staff, myself, I took the lead on this, um, situation, did schedule discussions with both the Architectural Board of Review and the Planning Commission on the proposed guideline master plan document from the Coast Village Business Association. And I think that's actually, uh, what Mr. Copas is referring to in terms of hearing back, that more work would be, uh, appropriate on the document. I don't recall that that direction came from the city council. I think that was at a planning commission meeting.
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so anyway, that was an effort on staff's part to share with the Architectural Board of Review, who has the design review authority in that area, as well as the Planning Commission, with the concepts that the, this group was generating for ideas. And, uh, staff and the Planning Commission, I think, both explained that this concept is anticipated in the, uh, general plan, Plan Santa Barbara policies in a couple of ways, and that specifically, um, some policy and implementation, uh, guidance calls for design overlay studies of, of specific neighborhoods and areas of the town, as well as sustainable neighborhood plans and the such. So Coast Village Road was listed as something, an area and this type of thing that would be further worked on. That was the comment from the Planning Commission, is that they saw this as a really good start, and that a lot of the, the discussion in there reflected, um, uh, some other existing city policy, but doing a special study for that area would be a good idea. I have consistently explained that I anticipated that that would be in the implementation phase of the process here, and that it would also be, um, have to find its proper priority in terms of the other implementation, uh, suggestions, you know, and working with the city council, um, implementing, um, say, the... implementing, say, the new average unit density program, amending the zoning ordinance, doing the historic resources element, the adaptive management plan. And, you know, where would the idea of the Coast Village Road guidelines fit? So I think it was in light of all that, that the Planning Commission, I think, was trying to give encouraging direction to the group, that there could still be more homework amongst the community there to, you know, from the grassroots level, to still keep this alive and get more input. We did find that, in the brief review that we did, that we received comments from some property owners and neighbors within the road area came to the Planning Commission meeting, even though it wasn't a widely publicized meeting. They requested that they would like more involvement in that process. So that's my interpretation of the city's response to receiving the draft was to try to explain how I think for now it fits in Plan Santa Barbara, what could possibly happen in the future, and the feedback that the Planning Commission gave.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sweets. And if I could make a comment, as my recollection is, and as you just pointed out, there are certain areas of the city that have been specifically called out because of their special characteristics for overlays relating to design and density in particular. And those do need to happen, and they need to happen as part of a public process. And, Mr. Copas, I'd be happy to talk with you about this further offline, but I think there is an opportunity here. And I think that, as with our discussion of the historic resources element at our last meeting, where we have the opportunity to collaborate with people in the community who are interested, that's great. That, that will move things forward more quickly.
Yeah, I mean, that would be very much appreciated. I think that's, that's all we want. You know, here, as, as any city association or organization, we're kind of helping the city do its work. And so, you know, it seems only right that the city maintain a constant communication with associations like ours, not just our association. We're all trying to make this place better.
Sure, we appreciate that.
And we all are, you know, using our time, that is precious for all of us, to do just that. So if we could have a dialogue so that we could get some of these implemented or at least have a discussion about these to see what's proper, that would be very much appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Judy Arias, I hadn't planned on speaking, but in examining this document, I have to bring up two concerns. The first one is the roads that are listed as needing to be addressed for master plans, et cetera, et cetera. Is that an all-inclusive list and nothing else can be added to it? Because we have been working long and hard to try and get a stoplight at Calle de los Amigos and Modoc Road. And it is not listed here. And this is a road that had, the county has raised the speed limit to 50 miles per hour, just to, right at the district. And it would also slow down the traffic for Vista del Monte, as well as Calle de los Amigos, et cetera. The final thing I see in here that is not mentioned at all is any sort of policy regarding something that happens in every neighborhood in this town, and that is the speeding. You have on item C3, which talks about vehicle speeds, blah, 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 and things like that. But what about the dealing with the problem of speeding within the neighborhoods? That is something that every neighborhood in this city is concerned about. And you should have some things said about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Louise Day is about item C1.7 that Rob and the council members addressed earlier, mid-block traffic flow improvement. I think the way this language is now, it reads like it could apply to almost anything downtown and could be quite destructive. It's good language for new suburban developments, new parts of a city or a new city. He said it was originally intended to apply to Outer State Street. And that brought back big memory to me of some, I think sometime in the 1970s, the Planning Commission very strongly recommended that Outer State Street have a a parallel access road. In other words, on the erroneously called west side of the street or the south side of the San Roque area, there are, many of the shopping centers were built with connections where one could drive into another, except in one place where the property owner blocked it off. But, and, and that was one, you know, excellent purpose, to keep the shopping traffic off of State Street until they needed to exit. On the north side of the street, there really aren't any of those because the newer sections were allowed to just develop with the immediate access. Like when you're turning into the auto club, you have to be really careful, that kind of thing. But there, there was the intent to, to encourage and develop a parallel access road. I don't know whether anything like that could be done now, but it is, it is an idea. But I think if you leave this C1.7 section in, it should be more clear as to where it applies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. White.
Can we get, was staff have a comment on the Calle de los Amigos?
This list is not an exhaustive list. Questions come up daily, weekly, in terms of city traffic operations. So that's my understanding. This list primarily is a result of the traffic analysis done and environmental impact report. And these were the intersections found to have most impact in terms of our level of service and such versus
Right.
A concern about stop signs or things like that.
Safety.
I apologize for interrupting, Mr. DeForest.
No, you're not interrupting. In fact, I can chime right in on that. That I think for simplicity's sake and for all the other intersections that aren't mentioned here that could be problems, that it's dangerous to list things because, as indicated, that if you don't list them, then they're not a problem. So why, why just, why just take out all this list of intersections off, out of the general, the general plan? All intersections are, all, all intersections need to be, are a problem. I happened to drive by the intersection a few weeks ago, the intersection of Anticapa and Los Olivos. And there was a big, or big, there was a number of people from the Upper East Side Association trying to figure out how to make that intersection safer. That's a, that's another problem, intersection. So there are lots of intersections that need to be covered. So what, what do we need, why do we need to specify them in a general plan? Now, specific, on specifics, C1.1 Bullet Point 2 considers established bicycle priority. These are the right ways. Now, this hasn't worked, at least in my opinion. The bicycle lane on Chapala Street north of Mission is a, is a mess. There are no bicycles and the cars don't know what to do. It's a, it's a problem and it's a special problem in making, making turns up to Constance. So I think that item should be deleted. Could, on item C1.3, could the term intermodal connections be, be explained to a layperson? Unless only specialists are going to have to read this document. I don't quite understand what staff means by that. And I gather back down, C7 doesn't, is not going to address current mid-block traffic flow problems, like back to the Crater Joe's on Delavina Street, where the people trying to get into the parking lot block Delavina Street because trying to make left turns off of, trying to make a left turn into the parking lot. This problem, item C7.8? I thought this idea of requiring all multifamily and commercial products to be designed to meet the needs of bicycles was a was a, a, too much as a, as a, as a requirement. And maybe it should be, the term should be encouraged because obviously if we're building every multifamily or commercial, I mean, there may be multifamily units long ways from bicycle, where bicycle uses would not be needed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeForest. Okay. Any further comments from staff?
Nope, we haven't finished.
Or from Mr. Hotchkiss? Ah, you've ruminated. Yes, yes, yes. Please, continue, sorry.
For Mr. Arias, I believe the traffic department's looking at that now because I requested that they do about- I'm not, I'm not surprised. Okay. All right, let's go back to specifics here. Explain to me if you could, cash out parking, develop a citywide employee cash out parking program similar to the existing state law that would reduce the employer size participation down to 20 employees. Does that just merely mean that you're doing cash out instead of 30 employees to 20 employees? I'm not sure what that is.
Set of 50 down to 20, yes.
Okay. Does that incur a financial burden on the employer?
Well, there's different ways you can do it. I'll give you an example of the cottage hospital, the way they did it is they decided that they would give all their employees a, a certain amount of money a month and then take, and then take it away if they parked in the garage. And then the other way of doing it is you could just, you could just charge employees to park in the garage.
Okay. While you're up there, C6.2, Transit Pass Program. Require employer-paid transit passes to be provided as part of the conditions for approval for entitlements for all employees of, and then it goes down to list. Do you know how much that's going to cost per employee?
Well, the, whatever the bus fare is.
It's like 600 bucks a year.
The other thing is it can be negotiated with the, the FTD does negotiate, but even at the face value of a ticket, it's already subsidized. So it'd probably end up be the base, the base ticket fare.
Well, there are no annual passes, so with the monthly rate, it's like 600 bucks a year.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah, there are. So like 50 bucks.
It depends, well, it depends how much you, you ride, but the, if you do a, I think the 10 ride is the best deal at, I think it's a dollar 15 a ride.
Well, the monthly passes are 50 bucks. I think it's actually more than 50. So that's why I come up with a $600 figure. And when I talk to downtown businessmen, they gulp and go like, I'm going to be paying 600 bucks more an employee? You know, if you've got 50 employees, that's 30,000 bucks in this market. That's, that's, that's big money. That's a margin.
Well, I think it's important to point out that it doesn't apply to all of downtown. It applies to new development. So, but it, you know, the reason of doing this type of step is to try to mitigate, again, and kind of getting back to the whole transportation. What we're trying to do is we're trying to move forward with incremental development without incurring more congestion.
I understand.
These are just one, these are just strategies.
Okay. But again, remember, we're trying to be a business-friendly town here. And when people are trying to choose between us and this other town or whatever, and these costs, they're not enormous. They're something, but little by little, they build up. We're requiring greater costs for energy, retainment. And so I'm, I just don't think that's a, you might say encourage here rather than require. Require is a dangerous word, you know? It makes us sound like Big Brother.
I, I just, I would just point out, and I'm not trying to dissuade you in any way, you're, you're the leader. All trips that enter, go on the road, all new car trips, cost everyone something. So someone will pay for a car to be on the road. We pay for it in congestion, we pay for it in removing congestion. So there will always be a cost to every car that is added to the road in the city. So it's a question of who pays for that. That's, that's all it is. And so to the extent that you can forego that new trip added to the city and maybe the development, the developer who wants to have that development and they're willing to weigh and balance the costs, you heard from the public, they're not in any way. I heard pretty firmly, I think from Mary Lou Day's, she's been here a long time, the congestion in Santa Barbara is intolerant. And that's what we've heard in the Plan Santa Barbara process. If we're going to get there, there will have to be very unique and difficult or costly proposals that keep us at that level.
All right, I think that's stringent. I don't think it'll fly, honestly. Last one, C7.8, that Mr. DeForest just pointed out, but I think he missed the key point, was bicycle parking and other needs require all multifamily and commercial projects to be designed to meet the needs of bicyclists, e.g. secure parking, storage, lockers, and showers. You know, when we come up to showers, now we're talking to some big bucks in your development. That's $100,000 or something to do, separate shower, separate locker, separate room, plumbing, et cetera. So, I mean, could this be, could we just strike the story of the showers there? People, place for people to, I mean, believe me, that makes it much more palatable. Do you not think so, gentlemen? I don't know.
On that particular topic, I think, again, perhaps changing, I realize that these are all possible implementation actions. But changing, changing the require to an encourage might be a good approach. And I would just say that regarding what you're, you're pointing out here about showers, these are all examples of what might be included, not, and especially if we remove the word require.
I, I think Mr. Francisco makes good suggestions. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on a couple of points there. First of all, you made it that the, this is a list of possible implementation actions to be considered. And I can hearken back to projects where the shower became, if the project is of enough scale that to provide these facilities, a lunchroom is another one, as I recall, is a, is a, you know, a requirement of certain commercial developments that, that then keeps employees from needing to travel to, to have a meal. That, that these can be, that these costs don't get borne by you and me for that project. That is to say, we're having to pay for the congestion or, anyway, the citizens need to pay or the neighborhoods need to pay. So I appreciate Mr. Dayton's comment that there's, there's no free lunch here. So if you're, if you're being soft in one place, you're actually being hard in another, that is to say, on a neighborhood or on a community, when you allow new development to occur. And Santa Barbara obviously is very stringent. It's interesting because Santa Barbara as a city is very low in fees. I know that that's probably hard for you to believe. But if you were to go to Galita or to the county, an incorporated area, and get entitlements for either a house or a commercial development, the cost, just the entitlement costs are quadruple uh, I mean, a residential cost can be somewhere in the realm of between 35 and 40,000 dollars a unit. That's for the permit costs. So, we do very well in this city, we're very competitive at that level. And one of the ways that we stay competitive at that level is that we require things of projects that are, that mitigate their impacts and that, uh, make them more compatible with the neighborhood. So, that's been at least an area where, um, I've watched this occur, participated in its, and it's happening, and, and I think that it, that it makes sense. I want a little bit of leverage, at least on the, on the bus pass question, which I think has helped me swallow it better over the years, is that, as I recall, it's been offered, there'll be a little notice or some, some kind of basis where an employee, an employee isn't handed a bus pass involuntarily, but an employee is offered one. And it may not be, uh, soft enough for you to, to, to accept it, but I can tell you that it's less costly than just, you know, basically, uh, and I think there have been situations in the past where everybody got one. And of course, that's a, a waste of money because it's just, uh, passes for people who don't use them. But that, in fact, that, that employees, and I'd appreciate even getting, asking Mr. Dayton to comment on that, is that not one way that basically that an employee, you just make sure that an employee gets, gets notified that this is available if he or she wants it and that only a portion, uh, take advantage of that?
That's correct, and that's how, say, an OLEO functions. So, any employee who, who wants a, a bus pass, uh, gets one. And they don't, they don't do the monthly, they do the, they, I think, pretty sure they do the 10 rides.
Okay. But that's not what the wording here says. This is requiring that they get a pass, so if it.
Requirement that they be offered a pass.
Not what it says here.
I know, but I'm saying, if that works for you, I mean, I, that feels better to me than just leading it encouraging. And again, we back up all the way to the softness of the umbrella language that, uh, hopefully will allow us to, to get to yes on that.
Right, well, in response to what you're saying about, uh, lockers and showers, um, there is absolutely no guarantee this is going to have any effect at all on anything insofar as mitigation is concerned, because people don't choose to ride bikes. This is useless. So, you know, the idea that, oh, well, the company or the individuals are absorbing costs that otherwise the neighbors would have to is wishful thinking. It may work, it may not.
Mr. White, did you have further comments? Okay.
Thank you for taking the time to do that. That'll help us in communicating to the city council what areas of the policies you discussed and where possible changes might occur, because I think that'll help facilitate their, the full council action.
Great.
Thank you. And along those lines, Mr. Ledbetter wants to review this with you.
Yes, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have summarized here the, um, the recommendations, as we understand them, that you've made, uh, to the council, and we'd like to just, uh, read through these briefly and get any comments or corrections you might have, um, if you don't mind taking a few moments to do that. Would you like to just read it over yourselves, or you want me to read them out loud, or what's your preference?
Well, I think for the benefit of the members of the public who are here who may not have copies, or do they have copies? Okay.
Everybody's got a copy, yeah.
Let's be safe and read them.
Sure, Mr. Ledbetter, it's, it's short enough, why don't you just go through and read them?
I'd be happy to do that.
And if, if any of my fellow committee members have any questions, please speak up.
So, under the topic of density, the first point is replace the variable density incentive program, the current one, with the average unit density incentive program. Second point, develop a temporary five-year land use ordinance incentive with a sunset clause to allow higher density projects in specific geographic areas delineated by an overlay, together with a program to assess the effectiveness of the policy. And that, of course, is, would be the AMP. Limit the number of higher density projects to 100 or, uh, 100 units or five years, whichever occurs first. Now, this, of course, was not a unanimous recommendation, uh, with Councilman White recommending a higher number upwards of, uh, 250 units. A next point, establish only a medium-high density of 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre allowance for the average unit density program. Do not establish a high-density designation. Again, uh, Councilman White was in the minority on this one, recommending both a medium-high and a high designation. Next point, temporary allow higher densities in specific geographic areas under the average unit density incentive program at a 50% increase for market condominiums and a 100% increase for rental and employer housing. Councilman White's, uh, position proposed a high-density designation at perhaps a lower density, um, than the, uh, 27 to 45, with a single 50% overlay for rental employer housing. Or if that's not supported, then another option would be to, at the end of the five years of the average unit density, it would revert back to the variable density incentive program.
Well, this, this was left as sort of a cloud, I thought, as when we were leaving. Uh, Mr. Francisco had said he was going to talk to Mr. White about this. I'm, um, can we discuss this a little bit now, or what would you like to do, Mr. Francisco?
Mr. White, the one question I had for you is the rationale for having the average unit density metric disappear at the end of five years and go back to the number of bedroom metric for variable density?
Well, um, I think that the, it might help you to, and to understand my position, if I, if I place a hierarchy on what I think should happen in the mixed, I'll call it the mixed-use area. I think that the, my number one choice for the mixed-use area is that it go to, and I'm going to rebrand this today, because I think one of the problems in the discussion in the media is that the term high-density, I think, is a misnomer. I think it's a moderate downzoning that occurs to what has previously been described as, and we call, is that the 27 to 45 units per acre? Is that the right number? So, I'll use that 27, 45 number. That's my number one, for, to establish my hierarchy of, of preferences. That's number one. Number two is, and this is just for the mixed-use, I'll call it the mixed-use zone, number two is status quo. And number three is the previously called, the 15 to 27 or medium-high, uh, designation. So, I think there's gotten, uh, so that's, that's my basic policy position is, that's my hierarchy of, of preference. So, I, I'm not going to be able to support, uh, at, at least as I have understood, uh, your position and I, and for example, Ms. Lodge has talked about this as well, the basic thought has been put the, and I think Mr. Hotchkiss mentioned this in a committee meeting or two, putting the, the so-called medium-high, the 15 to 27 throughout the mixed-use area has been your idea of, of how this should go. And I think once that happens and once 100 units is developed, that, that would be the end of it, that we would go to the 15 to 27, and that would be where the city of Santa Barbara would land. And I think that that, and I, and I appreciate that that's perhaps your vision of this situation. Mine is that the, that the moderate downzoning, what I'll call the moderate downzoning, really ought to be given, uh, primacy and allowed to go forward. And if it, if it fails, or if it's, the adaptive management, uh, shows that it's causing adverse impacts of one kind or another, that on a five-to-two vote, that that could be changed, which of course it could be, you know, and as, as it could be anyway, uh, with, uh, perhaps a little more environmental work and so forth, which I would not want to have happen, I want it to be fairly expeditious, as long as that's the will of the council, uh, to, to go to, uh, either back to the status quo or conceivably at that point with a five-to-two vote, to go to the medium-high density. So, um, I, I am trying to avoid a default to the 15 to 27 unit, uh, configuration in the mixed-use area. I support it in the, the other 40% of the city, which, uh, that is to say, the R3, R4. I think that that's a, uh, a good thing. I think it'll make the, make those areas more compatible with the, the mixture of single-family that really inevitably ends up going into the East Ariaga, and really all through our multifamily neighborhoods, we find pockets of single-family dwellings and those apartment buildings kind of mixed around them.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you think this more or less does all that in one sentence?
Well, I, I would say that the, you know, I mean, I just, I think that we'll have this conversation, it's good enough. I think that the, the, the other little bit, the detail that I, I will, I'm glad to, or maybe the term might change.
We'll put the numbers next to high-density, that it's 27, 45.
Yeah, and, and then up in the, in the second bullet, to, that the term sunset clause, uh, are, I, I'm a little shaky, I'm not coming up with something else off the top of my head, but with a, uh, a decision point or a, a, a relook which would allow something, because I, I picture that as being a five, uh, again, a, a council supermajority making a change of direction at that point.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Um, on the first paragraph, we talk about a 50% increase for market condominiums, which I think was your suggestion, Mr. White?
No, mine.
Am I right?
No, that was my decision, my suggestion.
Okay, if we, and 100% increase for rental and employer housing. Okay, a 50% increase, 100%.
Are you talking about on the first bullet?
Yeah. Um, a, uh, 100% increase for rental and employer housing, basically, per unit cuts, cuts the cost in half, right? That's another way of looking at it.
Potentially.
Huh? Potentially, right.
It's, it got us into the 50s, which is what we've been told by developers is minimum to make it fly.
That's accurate. But my question is, if we do a 50% increase for market condominiums.
Actually, I think market condominiums, I, we, I think we really just meant market-rate ownership units. We presume they're going to be condominiums, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
But since those, okay, so now that's a, like a 30% reduction in land cost with an increased density, therefore, isn't that going to mean that anybody penciling this out is going to say, well, why bother to build rental or employer? I'm just going to go for the market stuff, uh, because with these numbers, I can, I can make that work, and they're going to work better than rental, so therefore, we're, um, sort of blanketing our rental, is what I'm saying, and employer housing. Do you follow what I'm saying? Or maybe I'm not being.
Mr. Chair?
I'm not really sure.
Well, I think that there's actually four numbers involved here instead of just maybe one. And the four being, there's, the, I understood the term average unit density to apply to two densities, to the fifth, to the moderate, to the medium-high density, which would be where the, the R3, R4 would apply, as well as the moderate downzoning, the high-density, the, the 27 to 45.
The red zone.
The red zone. So, and both of those are average unit density, uh, designations.
Right.
And each of the, and then there are the overlay zones on top of that, that bump up densities for rental and for the purposes, you mentioned one for, for, for market-rate condominium. But, uh, so that there are then four sets of land use densities. There's two ownerships and two rentals. Am I, am I doing that?
So, I would just make one clarification on that. I would say, you're proposing to stick with the medium-high and high with one overlay for rental, whereas the other option is to have, uh, one average unit density of medium with two overlays, 150, 100.
Right.
But.
And, and where, and where this statement gets to be where we, everybody nod our head is that all of that falls under the average unit density program, because it's, it's a more general term. Uh, we disagree on, 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 on the spec, some of the specifics of that.
Right.
But that, the, the concept of changing over, we all agree, is a good one.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Again, let's go back to what I was saying, that if we give bonus densities to market rates, I think the market rate is going to prevail and the other stuff is not, because it's going to just pencil out better. And clearly, you know, the, the, the money's going to predominate here, the economic decision.
You know, we have some, we have some very tough decisions to make at the council level on this, and I would suggest, this is, this is a rough idea of how to approach the problem, and we may want to tweak the numbers at council. Hopefully, we'll be getting some more. I had, I had a, uh, discussion with, uh, Mr. Campanella the other day to get a better picture of what he was describing, and I think we'll probably get more input like that before we actually make the decision at council.
So, let me do then, just continue a couple more points here.
Sure.
So, the last two under density are remove the Brinkhoff and Bungalow districts from the high-density overlays and remove references to form-based coding. That didn't seem, uh, any controversy there. And lastly, expand the proposed Floria ratio policy to indicate direction to form a working group to include local professionals from the development community. Then in terms of the historic resources element, add a reference, a general reference to historic preservation in the land use element go, goals, as well as, of course, it would be in the historic, uh, remove references to form-based codes, add an explicit statement to assure protection of city, state, and national landmarks, and then, uh, expand the historic landmark committee to include members of the preservation community and begin that work as soon as possible. And then finally, remove that, uh, action, uh, implementation action of a six-month interim preservation design guideline.
Sit down.
Yes, okay, and then for today, um, okey, um, for circulation and parking, um, there seemed to be a general agreement on, um, on the, the policies and goals, um, with, uh, with the exception of one deletion, uh, that everybody agreed on, and that was.
Parking maximums.
Yeah, parking maximums. And then, um, Councilman Hotchkiss had a number of, uh, clarifications that he requested on a number of other items, which I can highlight that.
He just did it.
Okay, so you're satisfied with that? Um, and let me quickly go through my notes here.
We're all over the map on the 250.
The 250?
Yeah, the air quality is pretty straightforward. We can say that Councilmember Francisco questioned whether or not applying that setback standard made sense with the amount of information available at all. Mr. Councilmember Hotchkiss thought that the 250 might be appropriate, and at this time, Councilmember White was going to look more into it. We can easily report those outcomes today.
Okay.
And I believe on number three, about reducing parking requirements, was there consensus on that, that that was a bad idea? Or were you in favor of it?
I'm in favor of, in, in the urban core in particular, right?
So, we have another 2-1 on that.
Right. We would characterize Councilmember White's position as interested in maintaining the one parking space requirement. And that went along with him saying, however, he was comfortable not making a maximum. And that's where you all had agreement, but he still was recommending the one.
Right.
And then in terms of unbundling, uh, everybody seemed to be either comfortable with it as it is or comfortable after careful review of the process, despite some skepticism out of the shoe.
A definite maybe, John, I think is a.
Okay. Air quality covered, so then the last would be the, um, discussion of the AMP. And, um, it seemed that everybody was comfortable with the language of the AMP. Yes, I didn't have any changes on that one.
Mr. Chair.
This week.
So, the, we're, we prepared a summary staff report, it's pretty brief, just giving, you know, that the committee was created and we've had these meetings. And we do have some discussion, um, staff input on the area of continued, uh, debate in terms of density. I think we characterized the, the majority of everything else as being in general agreement with the committee. But then again, today's meeting where there wasn't.
with the committee, but then again, today's meeting where there wasn't as much general agreement, we'll just call out your individual positions. But as you do, we anticipate that the full council will want to discuss any number of these issues, but particularly the density issue and as well the number of units that might be in the regulation that's adopted. So we're going to provide some additional input on that as well. But what we were thinking is that at the meeting, we might not need to make a presentation. We wanted to pose that to you all, should we just more or less say, "We're here, we've had the three meetings, the background informations and the written report, and turn it over to you all," or do you want us to take the time to summarize each, you know, these things for the council? Our goal at this stage of the process, we've expressed it a number of times, is really that as much council dialogue and much committee dialogue, and you have, these meetings have worked to do that. So we just want to pose that again as a question for you. It wouldn't take us that long to do the introduction, if you'd like, but what tends to happen is then the council people are looking at us. So we're just posing that question to you, if you want to try to change that dynamic a little bit when we return on the 19th.
I think a good approach personally would be for you to go ahead and do a brief summary, and then each of us on the subcommittee, I think it would be appropriate for us to spend at least a few minutes talking to council about our perspectives, and I'll try to do the best job that I can of providing a summary of what I think consensus was, where there was consensus.
Okay. And then perhaps you can check in with the mayor and let her know as well.
Sure.
We have usually on these meetings to try to manage the meeting and get as much done as we could, so that would be helpful for her to know what the game plan is.
Yep. Very good. I think we're done.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.